I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, gentlemen, we have one addition to the agenda tonight. That would be item 2A. It's Maryland Department of Commerce Economic Development Assistance Hotel Relief Fund. Without objection, I'd like to make that item 2A.
Need a motion to make that item 2A? So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Okay, that'll be item 2A.
All right.
All right. Gentlemen, is there a motion to approve the minutes from the last public business meeting?
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to our presentations tonight, first, we have our Allegheny County Salary Study Commission report. Mr. Stu Zabski was the chairman of that. And please, join us.
Good evening, commissioners. Happy New Year.
Same to you, sir.
Thank you, Stu.
I'm gonna screw you up here, Paul, as soon as I touch this thing. I apologize. Okay. This year's Salary Study Commission was comprised of seven members. Myself as chair, representing the Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Jonathan Dayton, representing the Allegheny Garrett Fire and Rescue Association, Mr. Brian Grimm, Allegheny County Democratic Central Committee, Mr. Lawrence Casey Camp, Western Maryland Central Labor Council, Todd Loggston, representing the Allegheny County Republican Central Committee, Ms. Tiffany Mock, At-Law representative, and Mr. Ian Reiki, the Allegheny County Foreign Bureau representative. The Salary Study Commission had a series of meetings to consider and discuss information for the purpose of making recommendations for salaries for the next term, 2023 through 2026. There are six elected positions as follows. The Orpheus Court judges, we met on October 26th. After consideration, we recommend no salary increase for those positions for that four year period. On November 9th, we considered the Board of Licensed County Commissioners, the board. We are recommending a 2% one-time salary increase for the first year, 2023, and then no increase for the remaining years in that term, 2024 through 2026. The Board of Education, we met on November 16th. We are recommending no salary increase for that period. We also then met on November 23rd with the Sheriff of Allegheny County. We are recommending also no increase for that three-year period. On that same day, November 23rd, we met with representatives from the Board of Elections. We are recommending no salary increase for that period as well. Board of County Commissioners, we met on November 30th, and after consideration, we are recommending a 2% salary increase for each year during that four-year period, both 2023, 24, 25, and 26. You have before your belief the actual dollar amounts involved in those recommendations. Those are our recommendations, but in conclusion, I'd like to add that County Attorney Lee Beeman and Legal Secretary Cindy Young were a pleasure to work with and a tremendous resource during this process, and we greatly appreciate that resource. That concludes my recommendation of report. I'd be happy entertaining questions about the process.
Stu, thank you for your work and everyone that served on the board with you. We appreciate it because it's a lot of time and a lot of effort that goes into these recommendations.
Thank you. The group was very dedicated to that process. It was an excellent group this year, and this is my third time doing this, and each time has been great. This year in particular, it was a very well-rounded group and a very good conversation.
Great.
Stu, if you wouldn't mind, I know the recommendations seem a little bit kind of across the board there. Can you give the commissioners a little bit of kind of guidance as to how we reached? Some groups are getting no raise, some groups are getting a one-time raise. Can you give a little bit of guidance as to the factors that the Salary Study Commission looked into when making those determinations?
Absolutely. One of the things that Cindy Young in particular has done each of the three times I've been here, and I'm sure she's done it long before that, she does extensive research on comparing what other jurisdictions in our state are doing. The equal positions of what the population of that jurisdiction is, how many, as an example, county commissioners, how many county commissioners do they have, their form of government, she researches for us. So we know exactly apples to apples what our representatives are doing relative to the other jurisdictions in the state. So based on that information, we also then meet with representatives from each of those elected offices. They're all invited, not all come, but we do meet with at least one from each of those organizations and have that discussion. They actually, the representatives themselves make a recommendation of what they think should or shouldn't happen for their, as well. So we do a lot of research, know where we stand relative to the rest of the state, and we do hear from those officials themselves. So, and then, basically, we hear from each one, each of these meetings, then we have a wrap-up meeting to discuss any other issues. The group has been very open, and Cindy responds to any questions the group has with additional information. This group did ask for a lot of information this time. As we went through from meeting to meeting, they, you know, form of government, all kinds of questions, and Cindy looked up for us and provided. So it was a very engaged group.
Great. Thank you, Stu. So we will be putting this in the form of a Code Home Rule Bill for consideration in the next few weeks. And again, thank you for everyone that participated in this process.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you, Stu.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Moving on to our action agenda, item number two is a new assistance fund. It's geared towards restaurants. It's in the amount of $389,729. Gentlemen, this will be out in a few weeks. We'll be seeing if there needs to be a new application on that or not. Administrator Bennett can give some more detail as those become available. Okay. Go ahead.
Well, definitely. We'll follow the lead from this program that's been given to us from the state and build the grant program from that. As you know, we've done this a few times over, over the last year or so. This one will be just a new version for us, so watch in the next month or so for us to get this rolled out.
Yep. Okay. Gentlemen, that's item number two. Is there a motion to approve that new restaurant relief grant?
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Okay. And item 2A is the one we added. That's the hotel relief fund. That's in the amount of $495,591. Same thing on that. We will be working with all those entities that pay hotel motel tax and getting that money out the door to our people that need it. Is there a motion on that one?
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Item number three, this is a Code Home Rule Bill for Lavelle Sanitary District refunding bond authorization. Administrator Bennett.
Good evening, commissioners. So what you have in front of you tonight is the introduction of this Code Home Rule Bill. It's for $2.9 million for a refunding bond for Lavelle Sanitary. They're following our lead and many others' lead with historically low interest rates, and they're going to refund their debt. This is not county debt. I always point this out when Lavelle does this, but we are guaranteeing the loan, that's per annotated code, they're a component unit of the county, so anytime they borrow, it has to come through us. Tonight is simply the introduction. We'll have a hearing in two weeks and a potential vote that night. Then the bill would become effective March 7th of 2021, and this will allow Lavelle to proceed. They're doing all the work on this. We're simply doing the legal side of this one.
Great.
Sir, before we take the vote, I must inform you, since I am an employee of Lavelle, this actually does not affect me one way or the other, but I'm going to recuse myself from any vote on this this evening, so.
Great. Let it be noted, Commissioner Brody is abstaining from all discussion in this vote.
Commissioners, although this is listed on the action agenda, this is actually, it's just an introduction.
Yep.
There is no action needed.
So there's no, there's no action needed on that one tonight, but there will be in the future, so, okay. All right. Moving on to item number four. Mr. Paul Cale, Director Public Works, this is Water and Sewer Projects Overview for our Funding Agency Meeting.
Yeah, we call it something different. Actually, we're doing this instead of PACE, actually. Every year, PACE has been doing this, I think since the early 1990s. It's been very successful. We had Public Works discuss it, and we discussed with commissioners that, and we reached out to the funding agencies, and we received a positive response from every funding agency that's participated in the past. So we're having everybody that participated in that, we'll keep participating, maybe on our Polywater and Sewer Meeting opposed to PACE, but it's the same concept. And what we do is we prepare project sheets for every project, both projects we're working on now and projects we'll work on soon, and projects in the future, so we can keep everything in line. It helps the funding agencies know what they need to prepare for. They probably have a set in their budget if they ask for more money from the feds or the state government, so it's really been beneficial to us over the years. It's worked well for us. So the first slide, this is the schedule, the planned schedule. Of course, we're going to do Allegheny County projects in the morning, Lavelle Sanitary Commission meeting at 11 o'clock, going to County, 11:30 Frostburg, Western Port with a question mark, I put it on there. They have elected not to participate, but I wanted to actually show it even, I left it on there just to let you know we did contact them, because those are the people that's participated every year. And this year, Western Port has a number of current projects they're working on, so they decided we're overloaded or nothing right now. Everybody didn't want to talk too much, so I think they have a two-year window right now on some MDE water projects. So representatives from USDA Rural Development, Maryland Department of Environment, and Maryland project, that's actually Housing and Community Development, the water tanks, Cindy Stone, and actually got one of her from Tri-County Council and David Cotton, so we have the ARC people there, too, so they're going to participate. And we have a number of projects that involves them in the past. Underway projects, underway, we either have a study going or we're actually going construction. Brand Road will be under construction this spring. It's a waterline project to the, replacing an old piece of transite pipe which has failed in the past, and it's only line that feeds the Crest of Town water tank, so we're anxious to get this project done and be done by the end of the summer. Route 36, we're having a whole bunch of problems with corrosion in that line up there near the landfill. We've applied for a grant, looks like we're going to get $150,000. Doesn't meet our needs, but it's certainly going to give us a good start, and that will be coming from USDA. Hopefully, we'll hear confirmation that we're going to start. Plan water projects, plan water means that we either have something going on with that or the public has requested information. Barton Farm, you may know that's coming to chase, and then coming to chase. That project there, probably will have difficulty getting money from a lot of the funding agencies because they like to get areas that do not have water or sewer or are having problems. This is kind of development project, but with ARC being there and USDA, hopefully, they might have some pots of money for development, because USDA actually funded the waterline from Crest of Town to the Barton Business Park. So we've got a lot of moving parts in this Barton Farm project. We wanted to get down on everybody's radar screen in case there is some money. I think we reserve some money in our RBF line to help with this. And right now, the first phase of that would be a water tank and a water pump station so we can serve at higher elevations, and as you well know, we have all the capacitors. Hopefully, there are decent senior system, nursing homes, et cetera, out there, so hopefully that'll move forward. DeHaven Road, Dix Lane, Judy Lane, Mason Road, they're all small pockets that people have requested information on, but they haven't moved forward with. We haven't got a petition from them. DeHaven Road is a recent addition. There's 25 residents out there, and they're interested, they have a private water company. Bedford Road, we've been working on that for years. We did Veeder's Lane and Shade's Lane, some pockets out there, but we haven't been able to bite off the whole project, but it's on our radar screen. Vale Summit Water Storage Tank, we're concerned, we have a long line from Frostburg all the way to Vale Summit, that if it would ever fail, we would be out of water immediately. If we had a tank that would buy us a couple of days at a time, so that's been on our radar screen for a number of years. Future water projects, Route 220 Water Line, that's a one that's popped up there. That line is not owned by Allegheny County, it is owned by the City of Cumberland. In the past, we've had discussions with them about replacing that line, renovating that line, and actually maybe even turning that line over to Allegheny County and put a meter at the city of Dunlop line. Discussions haven't moved too much forward on that, but I think they need to, because that line's, I believe, created in 1930, maybe, 1940.
Yeah.
So when you think about the Route 220 Water Line, it serves Bowling Green, Crest of Town, Val Air, Lavelle, the prison, the area we're talking about, the Barton Business Park. So if this line would fail, the consequences would be drastic. We need a plan and move ahead with this, and we'll have discussions, begin discussions, and Cumberland's aware of this, and they're going to discuss a little bit their meeting when they discuss this in January 4, 10. So we'd like to see some kind of action, at least get a study going and get some cost involved for it. Flintstone probably is going to drop off after a while. Years and years ago, there was interest because there's some contamination wells. The project is extremely expensive, obviously, you're familiar with Flintstone, and houses are so far spread apart. I think we're looking at $25,000, $30,000 a household, so I think there's some other ways that can, that's kind of my way. The Lothian is a private water company. They've talked about in the past, and even I think at some point in the future, they may want to keep it on. We can put them, the system's set up, and we can put them on Frostburg's system if it ever was needed, there's a tap there, make that happen fairly quickly, we have a distribution system, and just keep that on the radar screen. Harwood, Harwood's very interested in water, but when we did this project, Slab Town area and the area above Harwood was not, so we couldn't make it work for Harwood either. They still have well problems up there, certain houses. People have water and some don't. Completed sewer projects, Mexico Farms, we're finishing that one up now. We've replaced a pump station out there. Underway sewer projects, obviously, this was our big one here, Locust Grove Pump Station, we're going to talk about this next, Locust Grove Pump Station, the Vale Force Main replacement, and the Vale Water Line replacement. Those projects, we'll talk about here in a few minutes, about award. Projects funded and looking, preparing to go. Flintstone and Old Town wastewater treatment plants, we've completed a study. These are kind of unusual. Usually, projects are based on priority about, we prioritize by serving the most citizens we possibly can with the project. That's how we pick. These here, Flintstone only has 77 accounts, Old Town has 44. These plants were built in the early 1980s, and we're really afraid of a failure on the tanks, so this was a difficult one, because Flintstone's estimated $3 million, so divide $3 million into 77 houses, and Old Town's $2.32 million. We need to figure out a plan here because we're afraid of a failure here, so. We had discussions within the E, and we'll continue to have in the 14. Veer's Lane is an area that continues to cause us problems. When we replaced this sewer system years ago, we used the ethyl from septic tanks. The ethyl from the septic tanks is very high, and chemicals have caused us problems. Hopefully, we'll be able to replace this system in conjunction with Rawlings at some point in time. I was hoping we'd have more movement at this, and we haven't had much movement in the beginning of funding for these two projects. Rawlings, every year approaches us from their homeowners association, they would like out of the business. It's one of the bigger pockets we have, does not have public sewer, there's probably 300 homes. They're working, the system's working, but it's not working great, so if they love that, hopefully, that will move forward the next five years. Plan sewer projects, the Barton Business Park wastewater treatment plant is going to tie into that Barton Farm project and Rawlings, and we really need to get a plan on how this is all going to fall together. That plant has a 50,000 gallon capacity, and we'll probably need 200,000 gallons, so that's one of the funding packages that we'll look at. North Branch wastewater treatment plant, clarify, our years ago, when we upgraded North Branch, we had to take this out of the project, and we were short on funding. That causes us operational problems, not major operational problems, but it does cause us operational problems. Braddock Run, Bedford, Braddock Run Sanitary District, Bedford Road Sanitary District, both under consent orders. We continue to make improvements. We've got a lot of funding in the past. Braddock Road has some room to move on rates because the rates are not extremely high, Bedford Road doesn't. We're trying to do a lot of in-house repairs, but some of the funding we've got has been so good for us that we've got some, we've got 87.5% funding, so we haven't turned that down. But we're going to try to do all that in-house, but see what else is available for us. INI is our problem. The systems were built in the 70s, and they're having extreme problems with INI. Future sewer projects, obviously, we just put those there. We have Braddock Run, Bedford, Jennings, the land we're considering, and we'll continue to deal with those INI problems. Borden's Zone in Slab Town is another area that does have sewer. There is pockets down there that have problems, they go directly into the stream, that's probably keep us on radar. And Vale Summit's kind of the same line. Other projects, Bowling Green Community Enhancement Project, that was a project we did years and go. I think you got, we're in office then, we had a big storm out there, and we got funding from the state. And at the same time, we got funding from the state to tear up the roads, we got funding for waterline issues out there. So we, this project here, we're doing a big drainage project, and we're doing waterline replacements, and we're doing that in conjunction with the state of Maryland, who funded a portion of drainage crews out there, so it worked out well. My favorite slide, current project funding. Right now, those projects that we have funded are $35 million, and they're red, which makes me very happy to look at that. $32 million is grants, and obviously, grant funding does not need to be paid back to the community. Bulk of that is in, overwhelming the bulk of that's in Locust Grove Project. We've got 87.5% funding on that, so that's why that's really worth it.
That makes us happy, too, Paul.
Yeah, because when you think about that, it is, Willow Creek, for instance, it's a valuable bring-up, but we have a half a million dollar a year payment that we pay on loans, so that's a half a million dollars that leaves our community. It doesn't go to restaurants, cars, et cetera. So it's very important for us, and we've been very successful. That's so much rest to be proud of as a group of commissioners, and the Public Works Department are very proud of. Any quick questions?
No, thanks.
Hopefully, you can attend. If you can, that'd be great. We wanted to make sure that you know what we're going after, so you're well aware and you're okay with us going after funding for the projects we're discussing.
And Paul, thank you for always putting this together so well, and Commissioner Brody, for your involvement in all these things. We appreciate it, because you make it look easy for the county and the residents of Allegheny County, because this doesn't happen everywhere.
And I will have to jump in, Adam Patterson, Dan Witt, Mark Yoder, Jim Weber, obviously. All those projects she's put together by our team upstairs, not me.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Great. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Okay. Item number five, Director Cale's up again. This is Braddock Run, Jennings Run Sewer Conveyance Improvement Contracts. Director Cale.
Yeah, we call it, that's the official name that the state of Maryland has given this grant for whatever reason. Actually, we better know it's the Locust Grove Project. There's three phases to this Locust Grove Project. There's a gravity main, we're going to abandon the Vale Pump Station, and we're putting a gravity main underneath Willow Creek, we're putting a new pump station at. We're replacing all of the Force Main and the Cullen that was not replaced a couple years ago. And then also, while we're doing this, we've been able to get, the Vale Sanitary Commission has been able to get a 50-50 grant from MDE for a million dollar loan, a million dollar grant, plus we got additional 250 last year from the governor's supplemental fund. The reason we're having a ball with this is this line always started to play out and serves the community of Corningville and Elks. So with this funding, we can, still digging up the line, putting a sewer line in now and doing a water line later, but we decided that this was a good time to run after money. We're successful, so we're going to do both at the same time. So it's a huge project for us. These projects, the waterline projects probably going to require, right now, we don't have the funding completely, we need to get some additional funding, but it's probably going to raise the rates for those water customers around $25 a year is the estimated increase now. For the sewer line, by approving these projects, actually, we have more funding than we need at this point in time, but we want to keep that funding in case we run into something unexpected, but we have surplus of funding because the bids come in so well. The rates, this Locust Grove Project affects the Braddock Run Sanitary District, which is Graham Town and Eckert, the city of Frostburg, Lavelle, Stateary Commission, and Corningville, Alastly, and Mount Savvy. So what's kind of neat about that project, that's around 10,000 customers, and when you look at the small amount of money we're going to borrow on a $35 million project, we're probably looking at a rate increase probably $10, $15 per customer, so that's pretty impressive, you have a project of $30 million.
Very good.
So what we're asking tonight, we received bids, we got really good bids on the gravity main, we're looking, we wanted, we're asking commission to give that to Gorney Construction for effects. We got seven bids, and the low bid on that was $5,685,850. Next one, we want to do the pump station, and we were asking commission to give out the car belt in the amount of $11,671,487. And that, when there, we had six bids. And the last one is the Force Main and Water Main. We're asking, you can award that the First Fruits from Ridge, West Virginia, for $4,792,790. We had nine bids on that one, so what we're asking for is your permission to award subject to the approval from funding agencies, which would be, right now, ARC is giving us money, Maryland Department of Environment, and Maryland Housing and Community Development, so I'll send that forward and ask, once we receive your approval. I guess we'll have to talk about, we're going to have, we're going to call up the system how we would be adding these additional costs, whether to add the loan, if you remember, I used to be having years and years ago, whether we'll put this on add the loan surcharge, and we'll call up the recommendation and consent, too.
Great.
Fortunately, they're not big increases.
Great. Thank you for that, Paul. Gentlemen, any discussion?
Sorry, again, I probably ought to change from this, this evening, on that particular item.
Sure. Is there a motion to approve item number five?
So moved.
Second. On favor.
Aye.
Commissioner Brody abstains.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay. Moving on to our consent agenda this evening, Administrator Bennett.
Commissioners, five items on the consent agenda tonight. Item six is Resolution 21-1 for Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development for block grant in the amount of $575,000 for Locust Grove. Item seven is request to purchase packaged pump station for North Branch in the amount of $55,850. Item eight is 2021 salvage license issuances. Item nine is CDBG funding in the amount of $20,600. And item 10 is Maryland Institute for Emergency Medical Services, accepting cardiac devices of grant in the amount of $17,120.
Great. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. On favor.
Aye.
Great. Administrator Bennett, anything else?
Nothing further.
Great. Attorney Beeman.
Commissioners, we received by email two public comments. If I may read them into the record.
Please.
The first is an email from Tiffany Fisher. She says, "Commissioners, the leadership of NAACP Branch 7007 would like to express our deep concern and disappointment at the response of Commissioner Shade to allegations of racial intimidation in Garrett County. As we're sure you're familiar with the events, as we have no interest in re-traumatizing members of the BIPOC, Black Indigenous, and people of color, we will not rehash what the family in question experienced, except to say that their story is more than credible. Commissioner Shade seems to believe that because the police did not find evidence to support the allegations, that they did not happen. He went on to label the event as phony and to demand an apology from the person that made the story public for supposedly harming the image of Western Maryland. He went on to state that the allegations did not conform to his view of Western Maryland. It cannot be stated too emphatically how harmful, nearsighted, and problematic Commissioner Shade's response was. First, the idea that because the police have said they cannot find supporting evidence is not the same as saying the event did not happen. It is entirely possible and reasonable that the events did happen and that the police could not verify them. To call it phony is exactly what BIPOC here and all over the country experience on a regular basis. It reinforces the reality that when BIPOC do come forward, no matter how serious and legitimate the concern is, we will not be taken seriously and cannot expect justice from our institutions of government. It puts BIPOC in serious danger to believe we will be dismissed when we feel we are being threatened, intimidated, or worse. To then expect an apology for supposedly tarnishing the reputation of Western Maryland is an act of victim blaming and intimidation in itself. We would ask that you all seriously examine the history of racial injustice in this region and ask yourselves again if you really believe something like what happened to this family is so far-fetched. If you have, if you have really been listening to the voices of BIPOC here, there is no possible way you can. The local NAACP held rallies here where our community stood up and spoke out, not just just about what happened to people like Jacob Blake, Ahmaud Arbery, Breonna Taylor, and a list that would go on for weeks, but about what we have experienced ourselves here in Western Maryland. To call this story phony and to demand an apology, it's a double down on the harm so many of us have felt living here our whole lives. We will not demand nor will we accept an apology. We expect and demand action. Action to make right the harm that has been caused to this family and to the local BIPOC community. We will be safe, but we will not be silent. Sincerely, Tiffany West, Tiffany Fisher and Evan West." The second communication received is from Tammy Fraley. "Good evening, gentlemen. I'm writing again today to ask that we, as elected officials, combine our efforts in helping our community recover from the COVID crisis. I'm not speaking on behalf of the entire Board of Education, but speaking as one individual elected official. There are so many times that we, as a community, have struggled with various challenges and have overcome. This is not about placing blame, but asking for assistance. Our community must rally once again. This crisis is not about the rich versus the poor, the majority versus the minority, or even the Board of Education versus the County Commissioners. We are all human and have suffered through this process. I personally want to challenge all of us, including myself, to not remain in our silo organizations, but to come together to make Allegheny County a place that overcomes this unprecedented crisis. We all live in an amazing part of Western Maryland. Please reach out to me so we can begin to work collaboratively. My ideas include biweekly meetings to brainstorm new ideas or to share information and a listing of volunteer opportunities published online to allow the public to be part of the process. I believe that the citizens of Allegheny County not only deserve it, but they require it from all elected officials.